Committee of the whole meeting is called to order. Do you stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Alderman Simpson.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Lasko. Alderman Kahnman.
Here.
Alderman Joe.
Here.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderman Tylen. Alderman Dove.
Here.
Alderman Griffin.
Here.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I need a motion to approve the August 27, 2013 committee meeting.
Go move.
Second. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Mr. Treasurer, you have a report for us?
Yes, Madam Chair. The corporate fund monthly cash report for the month of August. We had a beginning balance of $8,43,874. Receipts for the month of August totaled $10,305,259. Disbursements for the month totaled $10,675,871. So our ending cash balance in the corporate fund at the end of August totaled $7,673,262.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Are there any questions for the body? Hearing none. I want to take a motion to accept the Treasurer's report.
Go move.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the Treasurer's report. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Office of Budget and Management contract report.
Any questions?
I believe it was sent electronically. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Thank you. Ordinance tabled and remaining in committee. Oh, would the record reflect that Alderman Lasko has arrived?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ordnances tabled or remaining in committee are 2011-104, 2012-123, 2012-226, 2012-376, 2013-128, 2013-174, 2013-193, 2013-250, 2013-260, 2013-264, 2013-266, 2013-296, 2013-312, and 2013-313.
The administration has asked that we pull 2013-264 and put on the consent agenda. Are there any objections?
What does it pertain to?
Can you read the ordinance?
Yes. 2013-264 is an ordinance authorizing execution of a maintenance agreement with the New World Systems Corporation for annual maintenance fees for the Springfield Fire and Police Departments.
I have a question. Why was this put in committee in the first place? Why did we not vote on it when it came up? Chief here.
If my memory serves me correctly, we put it back in because they were working on some negotiations and stuff.
Oh, this is the...
It's the...
Is that right, too? Yeah.
This is the...
Do you want to come up and explain to Alderman what it is exactly? I think, refresh memories.
There were still ongoing negotiations, so it was held in committee.
And this is for a computer system?
Reporting software for the police and the fire department.
And what, how much is... I mean, we don't have the ordinance in front of me because it was presented to us before. How much, is it any increase over the previous year?
I would have to defer to Mr. Logan or Chief Hamrick or Chief Wayne with the police department.
Okay, I'd move to put this on the debate agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second for the debate agenda. Any, we still need you. Any discussion?
If you have an answer to the question.
Any discussion?
The money has decreased from the last time. The last year we paid $251,000 in 2012. It's $235,000 this year. With significant decreases from year to year. It's a five-year contract.
Thank you. If we could get a copy of the ordinance, an additional copy between now and next week.
Any other questions?
Thank you. And if you could send it electronically, I think that would suffice. It's been moved in second to be put on the debate agenda. Is, I don't hear any additional discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Madam Clerk.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
Also, like, 2013-312 regarding the Lot 5 in Cobblestone Estates. The promise was the last time that if everyone would defer this for the two-week time period that we would bring it out of committee today and bring it forth next week. I'd like to make a motion to put that on the debate agenda.
Sorry.
I know even as far as today, Mr. Joyner's been working with the Cobblestone Neighborhood Association. They've been trying to come to some middle ground and get this worked out for next week. So if we could put that on debate agenda and then if we have to have a debate next week, we'll, and if not, we'll be ready to move on, please.
Okay, it's been moved in second to put 2013-312. Do you need to read it?
I can.
If you would read into the record.
Sure. 2013-312 is an ordinance approving the plan for the large-scale development of Lot 5 in Cobblestone Estates, 25th addition for the Office of Public Works.
It's been moved in second for the debate agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Is there any members of the public or any representatives of the homeowners here tonight? Does anyone wish to speak to this issue?
There are some...
Go ahead.
Madam Chairman, there are some people that are here representing the Neighborhood Association. I know Mr. Joyner says, well, we've talked to both parties today and they both said if we move this to debate, if they don't have it worked out, they'd be ready to present something next week. But in the meantime, they'd like to just continue to work to find some middle ground.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. That was my understanding also. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Anyone else have anything they want to bring out of committee? Okay. Madam Clerk, ordinance is for committee consideration.
Yes. 2013-335 is an ordinance authorizing supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1,000 from unappropriated fund balance for the Office of City Council Coordinator.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
It's been moved in second.
For consent, I'm sorry.
For consent. Is there any discussion?
Just a question, maybe, Joe. What, I am assuming we have real old computers and they need to be replaced or what's the situation? Pardon?
Correct.
How old are the computers we're currently?
1980s.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
2013-336 is an ordinance authorizing payment to Robert Hamilton, an Office of Public Works employee, to settle a workers' compensation claim for case number 13WC16110.
Is there a motion?
Move to consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none.
I have a question. For whoever's knowledgeable about this case or...
Corporation counsel.
Corporation counsel, okay. Does this particular employee, Mr. Hamilton, has he had any prior workers' comp claims against the city?
Or Nate, can you answer?
Pardon me?
No, I don't know.
Corporation counsel, you can't answer that either.
Yeah.
All right. Well, can you see if you can get that information for us before next week? Who prepares these narratives here about the workers' comp cases?
Usually, I think Chris Menard, I think.
Chris Menard, and she's in your office?
Yeah.
I was wondering if in the future, as a matter of routine in all these workers' comp cases, if we could have the information as to whether the particular employee has had any prior workers' comp cases against the city and what the result of those prior cases were.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
Alderman, you still want to leave it on the consent?
Yeah, we could leave it on.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
2013-337 is an ordinance approving the tentative agreement for a 2013 wage re opener only with the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers for a 2% across-the-board wage increase effective October 1, 2013, for the firemen and oilers at the power plant.
Is there a motion?
Move to consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
I have a question. I just wonder, it says here that the contract, we just approved the contract like a month and a half ago, July 3, 2013. Well, I'm just wondering why it's coming up so quickly for a wage re opener.
Well, the contract was negotiated for October 1, 2011 through September 13, 2014. So obviously, that took a little while to negotiate the successor contract, and each of the subsequent years, we agreed for a wage re opener.
Okay, so this is just the first year on that?
Of the wage re opener only, yes.
July 3, 2013, that's when we passed, we ratified this current contract in the city council. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Ms. Barden, we had a conversation this week about, I've had a continuing request for two-plus years that we always state the old hourly rate of pay and the new hourly rate of pay. And I hope you'll make sure that gets placed in the ordinance information for each wage re opener in each union agreement. I think you said you're going to send me that hourly rate of pay information, but I did not get it, so I don't know what happened on that.
I responded to your email that Friday and subsequently followed up with a conversation when you were going camping, so maybe you didn't receive that, I don't know. But I absolutely did provide you those rate information.
Thank you very much.
I can provide you a copy if you want. And certainly, as I indicated on the phone to you, this will show up in every subsequent ordinance. There was a little bit of misunderstanding, but if you want the individual wage rates, I have no problem providing that.
Thanks a lot. I must have missed it, so.
Sure.
Apologize. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
2013-338 is an ordinance approving the tentative agreement for 2013 wage re opener only with the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers for a 2.1% across-the-board wage increase effective October 1, 2013, for the CWLP garage.
Is there a motion?
Move to consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
2013-339 is an ordinance approving the tentative agreement for the 2013 wage re opener only with the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers for a 2.1% across-the-board wage increase effective October 1, 2013, for the Dahlman Machinists.
Is there a motion?
Move to consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
2013-340 is an ordinance authorizing the execution of a tentatively agreed to memorandum of understanding with the City of Springfield, Office of Public Utilities, and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 193, regarding member disciplinary impact issues associated with the installation of GPS tracking systems in Office of Public Utilities vehicles.
Is there a motion?
Move to debate.
Second.
It's been moved in second for the debate agenda. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Griffin?
Madam Chair, maybe it's just clarification, and I remember seeing one of these before. I don't understand why we enter into a memorandum of understanding in order to put GPS tracking systems in our own vehicles that we own and the taxpayers pay for and insure and put gas in, and we allow them to take them to do their job. Why do we have to ask if it's okay to put GPS systems in those cars?
We do not have to use the, or ask the union whether it's okay to actually place them into the car. What we have an obligation to negotiate under the Labor Act is any impact that that has on the terms and conditions of employment. So if we intend to use these for the purpose of discipline, then I have to negotiate the scope and how we can use that for the impact purposes of placing a GPS system. So we don't negotiate the decision. We have the right to buy them, we have the right to install them, but under the Act, I have to negotiate the impact and how that can be used for disciplinary purposes.
If our vehicles are used the way we order them to be used and they get in the truck at our garage and drive to the job site they're assigned to, there should not be any disciplinary action taken because they've done exactly what they're to do. The only way there'd be any impact is if they were doing something that they were not to do.
Potentially, yes. And sometimes we just have to verify the public...
I don't see why we'd have to bargain that.
The public, well, there is an obligation under Labor Act to bargain the impact of it. And if we would refuse to bargain the impact of that, we have many of these, I negotiated at the Department of Corrections when I was there, for surveillance cameras, for GPS on any of the inmate transportation systems. We've done these here at Public Works. They've installed these and we've had to negotiate the impact. The reason why you're first seeing this before you is because of the ordinance that this brought by Mr. Kahnman, I believe, that any memorandum of understanding on impact issues, that does not simply interpret the contracts, but actually adds to it. And we've never had GPS as an issue in CWLP before, so this is in addition to the contract midterm. It now has to come before this council to be ratified.
So was it our decision or the bargaining unit's decision that there could be some misuse of these vehicles? I mean, I didn't, I would never have any idea that we would have any thought that they'd be using these anyway than what they're supposed to be doing. I mean, I never would have thought that we would have to check up on anybody.
The primary purpose is definitely not, and that's what this memorandum of understanding is trying to do.
I talked about being efficient.
It's not the primary purpose for us to be checking up. But if, in the course of business, we have an independent complaint, we certainly can use this GPS to verify, to substantiate the complaint or exonerate that it did or did not happen.
So with this GPS, we can have historical data of where this car was over the last two days, three weeks, four months, whatever it may be, right? There's a boat we can report, get a report on that?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
We already, these GPS devices, we already have them in the public works vehicles. We've had that for some time. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, when we adopted, when we first put them in the public works vehicles, did we enter into a similar memorandum of understanding with the unions that represent those workers?
Yes, we did. And that was mainly asked me, Council 31.
Okay. And is this essentially the same as that memorandum of understanding?
It is essentially the same. Obviously, we have an obligation to negotiate independent with each union on their impact issues, but definitely the essence of this isn't for the sole purpose for disciplinary, it's for safety X, Y, Z. But if we were to use it for disciplinary purpose, then the terms that we've negotiated apply.
If we wanted to install these GPS devices and say, we're not going to use this, we're not going to use any information that we get from the GPS for disciplinary purposes, then we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't be, need to negotiate an MOU. Is that correct?
Then we would be waiving any right for us to use it for disciplinary purposes.
Yes, Alderman.
Let's say, and I don't like to work in hypotheticals, but the city doesn't use the GPS. Somebody takes a picture on their iPhone of a truck and says this is where they're at, and the city doesn't use this. Do the rules still apply or can we do discipline without having to go to this MOU?
If we decide just to use the independent source that was brought to us, we can certainly use that. It would be on a case-by-case basis. Or we can go to this and even check the GPS system to substantiate...
Yeah, but I'm saying you don't. And do you, I think what, I heard my colleague saying, I think this is what's very frustrating to the public. You have somebody that's assigned to the White Oaks Mall area, and for whatever reason, they're a carpenter park, not even close to where they're supposed to be. And the city has to go through a grand litany of steps to discipline somebody, and it just drives the public absolutely berserk. And I think there's a lot of frustration. And, you know, you have to protect the employees, I know. But it gets to the extreme where management's getting held to a higher standard.
Well, I only can respond to that, that Illinois has the most...
And that's why Illinois is in the shape it's in.
Well, the Labor Relation Act mandates us to negotiate over terms and conditions.
And that's why Illinois is in the shape it's in.
Thank you. So I want to keep us out of legal trouble.
Thank you for pointing that out.
I believe this is what, we've done our due diligence. And if we were to use this, and we will be using this for disciplinary purposes, we now have a negotiated agreement.
How has it worked so far with other departments?
It's worked well. From my knowledge, I do know a particular case that actually, based upon the evidence presented to us, because we were able to check the GPS system, it actually exonerated the employee that was at issue. So it works both ways.
So has the reverse been true, too?
Yes, absolutely.
And is administered fairly?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I just heard a story on the radio today about the black boxes in motor vehicles. Apparently, the lieutenant governor of some state was stopped for speeding and he gave a police officer a story that the black box in his vehicle totally conflicted with. So do some of these vehicles also have these black boxes that record the speed and various other movements of the vehicle? And can those be used for disciplinary purposes, too?
This tracking system, as I understand it, will record all of it.
Well, a black box is something else.
I don't know the black box, but this system, the capability...
Any GPS system will give you a location and time. Speed is distance over time, so you just, you have that, you can back calculate what the average speed was between two points. So, you know, any of those systems can calculate speed. They don't transmit it, but once you have the data, the time and a location, and the next time and location, you can calculate speed. That's all the software does.
I think, if I may, Madam Chair, I think what Alderman Kahnman is referring to is some heavy-duty vehicles, large trucks, will have an indicator separate and apart from the GPS. It tells you what gear you're in, what speed you're in, what speed you're in at certain gears. And I think that's what Alderman Kahnman is...
There are, there are a whole level of, you can buy much higher-end systems that they'll tell you how many miles are on there and maintenance reminders that come up and indicate pressure, tire pressure. Yeah, you can get those connected and communicate back. These are strictly just GPS location devices. They're not the other devices.
I think he's asking a different question. I think he's asking...
Then it's not relevant to it.
Yeah.
It's not directly, it's related.
I think what he's trying to say is that if we're applying rules for these GPS boxes, do we have similar rules for the independent other tracking devices? It has to do with engine speed, engine transmission gears and that kind of thing. So it may be relevant or may not be.
I would say we don't have that correct. Okay.
Well, Madam Chair, if I might, it's in, I mean, it's in a lot of vehicles. You buy vehicles, and most, I think, what I heard in this story today was most vehicles that you purchase today as just a member of the public, a passenger vehicle, have these devices in them. So, but that's all...
And if we put ours, we'd have to do an MOU, right?
You know, if the vehicle comes with something, the computer comes with it, so I don't know.
What's the cost of the GPS systems? What's the cost?
They are leased on an annual basis. We pay per unit.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Every car has what Sam's talking about. If you've seen the commercial that one insurance company has where you plug that into the data, it'll tell you your average speed, your average gas mileage, how many miles you drive a day, the whole bit. And I think the question is, if we were to get those and plug them into vehicles, could that be used in the same vein that a GPS is being used? Is that what you're trying to ask, Sam?
Yeah, well, my understanding is they're already in vehicles.
They are.
I don't know that we've ever used it. And if we're going to use it for disciplinary purposes, then my answer would remain the same, that we have an obligation to negotiate the impact of it. This is related to GPS. So if we do do that, then our past practice will prevail. If we've never done it, then I'd have to put the unions on notice that we intend to do so and will negotiate the impact.
Any additional discussion? Thank you. All those in favor for the debate agenda?
Aye.
Pardon?
Aye.
Those opposed?
2013-341 is an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with an authorizing payment in the amount of $57,800 to Kaplan Financial Consulting, Incorporated, to serve as the city's independent financial advisor regarding the city's general obligation bonds for the infrastructure program for the Office of Budget and Management.
Move to debate.
Second.
It's been moved in second for the debate agenda. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, are we also going to be hiring bond counsel for the sale of these bonds?
Yes, we will. Yes, yes, we will.
Okay, that'll come sometime down the line, I take it.
Yes. This is the first step. This particular individual has worked on 15 prior issues for the city dating back to 1997.
So they might recommend the bond counsel to the city?
Well, they could, but we've had other bond councils that we've looked at and that we have used in the past, so we have one in mind.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Director McCarty, you're aware that this contract with Kemper provides that Kemper would manage the bond sale process. That's on page two of the agreement. And the reason for directing our attention to that provision of the contract is when we let some bonds recently for the utility, I remember we had a discussion about whether the bonds would somehow be made available to our local investors here in the Springfield area. And I got the impression during those discussions early on that, yes, there'd be an attempt to make the bonds available to our local investors. And then, as it turned out, I don't think much effort was made. So is there a representative from Kemper here? Or Director McCarty, do you have any idea whether Kemper will have any way to promote or make these bonds available to our local investors? These bonds are exempt from federal income tax and I believe possibly from the State of Illinois income tax. They might be double exempt and be highly attractive to our investors.
Okay, a couple of things. Number one, it's an independent Mr. Dan Kaplan, not Kemper.
Sorry.
That's the contract he's with. Secondly, as addressing your concern about making them available to local residents here, taxpayers and ratepayers, I have addressed that with Mr. Kaplan. He understands the position of the city. And in fact, I had a meeting today with a financial institution that is interested, potentially being our underwriter or at least a partial underwriter of this issuance. I explained it to them, what we would be looking for, and the bottom line is it's not going to be a problem.
That's really good to hear.
Yes, it will be a point of emphasis on this issuance, that there will be some way, somehow, the opportunity for local residents to get involved on retail level.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
2013-342 is an ordinance authorizing execution of an addendum to a redevelopment agreement with the Salvation Army to extend the completion date to June 30, 2015, for the rehabilitation of property located at 100 North Ninth Street.
Is there a motion?
Move to consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the consent agenda. Any discussion?
What was the, yes, if I may, what was the old, the current project completion date in the current ordinance?
Two months ago.
Okay, June 20, 2013. I see that. Was that it?
Um, I believe the completion date was May of this year, which they did not make, obviously. They've encountered some fundraising problems with respect to the project.
And this, the tip will still be existing at this, at this date, the new date, is that correct?
New date, that's correct.
Yeah. Looks like in the ordinance, the old completion date was no later than June 30th, 2013.
Alderman Griffin?
Director Farmer, do we know where, I mean, where are we at with this? Is this one of the deals where they're not going to initiate until the fundraising goals have been met? Or is this something that we're currently, the rehab has started, and we're just not to a point where we can complete it at this point?
I can't speak for Salvation Army. I know that there's been some changes within their organizational structure here locally. Do they have any major, one of their staff members is, uh, Major Woodard.
To answer your question, we are moving forward with construction. We've just got some bids. We will sending out six months, starting from October. So, construction will start on a phase, being a phase project, we're going to move for the, the completion of that, to start construction even as of maybe March of 2014.
I'm sorry, Major, would you state your name?
Sorry, Stephen Woodard, Major Stephen Woodard with the Salvation Army.
It's my understanding, too, through your charter, you can't start any projects until you're fully funded. Is that right?
We are starting the, the project actually through our charter, but through our divisional and territorial headquarters out of...
In that, I think we were doing some fundraising for you guys. That's what they told us. We can't do anything until we have the money secure to do our projects. That's what they told us.
What we can do is, we take it through a phase project. So, we are going to continue to work through the completion of the whole project, but we'll do it in phases now compared to, and as we receive those funds. But we will start construction as we'll send out the, the project for bid in October.
Alderman.
So, thank you. So, you, you're planning to do this in phases, how many different phases?
There are three phases.
So, okay, originally, I, I had heard the same thing as Alderman Edwards, that you had it in your rules, that you couldn't start construction until you had raised all the money you needed for the entire project. But now, things have changed, and you can do a phase, once you've raised the money you need for phase one, you can start on phase one, and then so on.
Correct.
So, okay, so you've raised all the money for phase one now, is that correct?
From our capital campaign numbers, that's what we're looking at within that first phase, yes.
So, and then that would be, so your, your projection is that would start construction March 2014?
Correct. And then a construction date of 15 months, which would make it to the May 2015, which still is within the side of the June 2015.
For, for all the phases?
Correct.
What, what are the, can you tell us what the three different phases are, and when you're...
Sure, the three different phases. The first phase is to actually taking our existing program to do a relocation, taking existing programs out of our Sixth Street location, shelter beds of 36 beds, health, clinical health space, also moving the chapel, moving administrative offices, and moving that into the three-story building on Ninth Street. The second phase, there's, there's a phase, sections to that. One is a family shelter that we'd like to have on the second floor. There's a youth section, a part of that second floor as well. That's part of the second phase. And there's, the third phase is moving into extending shelter beds, moving our 36 beds to an opportunity to go to 100 beds.
So, initially, first phase, you're just going to be creating the same number of beds in this new shelter as you have in your old shelter, 36?
With the extension, maybe two, two to four, that we might be able to add additional to that, those beds.
Okay, and when you do the family shelter, how many beds will be in the family shelter?
Right now, it's looking at six, six to eight family units.
Six to eight families, how many total people?
Uh, it depends on the, the family size, to that point. Maybe it's on average, maybe three to four individuals within that family.
Alderman, Joe.
Then I'd add another one, if I may, and then with regard to the, then you're going to build additional shelter space in the third phase for just single people, is that right?
Correct.
And then how many additional beds will be in that third phase?
Well, that's an additional, that's about the 64, that, so if you have the 36, or if you take 40, you'd have an additional 60 beds. And in doing so, we're hoping to incorporate the SOS.
I'm not following you. You said your, first phase, you're going to have 36 beds, and then about, and then the third phase, you're going to create some additional beds. So, I'm asking you, how many additional in the third phase?
So, it'd be 64.
64. And when do you expect that third phase to be finished?
That depends on, as the income comes into that, to support that, I think.
Okay, but certainly by June 30th, 2015.
That's, that's the plan.
Alderman, Joe.
So, Madam Chair, I guess, I mean, I, I hope we're not confusing the general public tonight. The, the project scope is not changing, correct?
No, not at all.
All we're asking, all you're asking, because as the director told us, because of fundraising difficulties, you're just asking for your end dates to be pushed back?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that clarification, Alderman, Joe. Thank you, Major.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
2013-343 is an ordinance accepting the bid and authorizing the execution of contract UE 140635, Unit 31 and 32 SCR Catalyst Changeout, with Henson Robinson Company, in an amount not to exceed $244,086 for the Electric Division.
Is there a motion?
Move to consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Yes, Alderman, Joe.
I have a question on the bids, real quick, just to break down what you had in here. There's a line in here for a discount for awarding both bids to a single bidder, and Henson Robinson has 5%, Hayes Mechanical has 2%, and Scheck Industrial has 0% on that discount. But it looks like they all bid for both projects. So, how do you break down who gets five, who gets two, and who gets zero?
Well, I think the 5% discount's local vendor preference.
No, that's below that.
Okay.
That's above.
Um, I would have to take a look at that one on bidding for both parts. I don't know if I've got a breakdown on that.
Because if you take that 5% out, then Hayes Mechanical, obviously, is the lower bidder. That's why I'm just curious. So, I just want to know how that's decided.
What's that?
Could you, what's, what's the response?
I mean, I'll, I'll have to figure out exactly, so what is the question, why is there a discount?
I wonder why, I mean, the way that it's, I mean, maybe it's, it's stated wrong here in this line, but it says discount for awarding both bids to a single bidder. I would assume that discount is from you guys, because you guys decide that there's a discount for awarding both bids to a single bidder. And if you look through them, if they've all bid on both projects, I would assume they all have the same discount, but I don't understand why one has 5%, one has 2%, and the other one doesn't have anything.
Okay, and is, is it for third one or two, or is it another account? Tracy's kind enough to inform me, the vendor actually fills that in. It's the discount that they will give if they win both jobs from their price.
Okay, that makes more sense, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
The description says that Henson, the company, the winning company here, Henson Robinson, is a local vendor. Did they get the contract because of the local vendor preference, or...
Yes, they, because of that, they're, otherwise, it'd be $5,700 higher.
Okay, so because of local preference, our extra cost is $5,700?
Yes.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
2013-344 is an or, is an ordinance authorizing additional funding in the amount not to exceed $275,000 under contract number UE 101077 with Har Scott Corporation for the generating facilities scaffolding for a total amount payable of $3,300,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Is there a motion?
Move to consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. This, all this money is for just purchasing scaffolding equipment?
It's not purchasing. It's for rental and installation and, and removal.
Okay, so the companies, they're going to install the scaffolding where we need it and then take it away?
Yeah, it's inside the boilers, and it goes up multi-stories, and it's, they have, it's special structured to go on uneven surfaces, and this is how you actually make repair to the boiler tube. So, they have to scaffold from the bottom up, and then you have to take it down before you can put the unit back online, so it's a very specialty trade.
And who actually does the work inside the boilers? Is that our employees, or some...
Sometimes our employees, a lot of time, it's contractors specialize in, it's, it's special composite alloys that the tubes are made out of, and welding and replacing the tubes.
Okay, but it's contract, not somebody from the scaffolding company, but in other times?
Correct, they just come in and scaffold, and then other, other crews come in and actually do the work.
Is this similar to, it seems like a lot of money for scaffolding. Is this similar to other, you know, costs we've paid in the past for this service?
Uh, yeah, we put it out for a bid, and, and there's no local companies that do it. This firm's out of St. Louis.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
2013-345 is an ordinance approving and authorizing execution of an agreement with General Electric International Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $129,723.96 for the purchase of spill strips for Unit 33 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Is there a motion?
Move to consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
2013-346 is an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $150,000 for the Office of Public Works Waste and Recycling.
Is there a motion?
Move to consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
For somebody from Public Works, or Recycling, is it, so this is, the money raised from the increase in the recycling fee?
Yes, sir.
So, we're, we raised more money than we had from that fee increase than we anticipated?
The amount anticipated was not budgeted in the beginning of the year. The amount recognized, and this is an estimate, and we're supplementally appropriating the amount we feel we'll receive in.
So, it's not that we raised more money than we anticipated, it's just that it wasn't, it wasn't appropriated in the budget?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. McGinn?
Do we know how this money will be spent on any particular programs?
I do not.
You mean, no decision's been made, or?
I've not been part of those discussions with Director Mahoney.
Okay, I understand Mr. Mahoney's out of town.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional discussion? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
2013-347 is an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $100,000 for the Office of Public Works.
Is there a motion?
Move to consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
2013-348 is an ordinance authorizing payment for tipping fees to Sangamon Valley Landfill for costs associated with court-ordered demolition, demolitions of unsafe and dangerous structures in the amount not to exceed $138,624.17 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
2013-349 is an ordinance authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement with Real Life Church for the property located at 2450 Taylor Avenue.
Is there a motion?
Move to consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, I think it needs to be on the debate.
Oh, wait, oh, sorry, move to debate.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the debate agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
I have a question. Does anyone know why they're seeking this church, is seeking to be annexed into the city? Is it they just decide they want to be in the city, or what's behind this?
My understanding's for water service.
Thanks.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
2013-350 is an ordinance annexing certain described real property, certain described property for Real Life Church located at 2450 Taylor Avenue.
Is there a motion?
Move to debate.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the debate agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
2013-351 is an ordinance authorizing execution of a supplemental preliminary engineering service agreement with an authorizing payment of $42,016.50 to Cummings Engineering Corporation for the Fayette Avenue Bridge over the Jacksonville branch.
Move to consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
2013-352 is a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that additional motor fuel tax funds in the amount of $42,016.50 may be used for additional preliminary engineering services for the Fayette Avenue Bridge over Jacksonville branch.
Move to consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
2013-353 is an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation for traffic signals, sidewalks, and bike lanes on Dirksen Parkway for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded for the consent agenda. I have a question. And I don't know if you can answer this question for me, but I was reading over the information, and in the agreement, uh, there's a letter to Mayor Houston, and it said included in the agreement are the following exhibits or attachments, uh, and they list them. And one is an ordinance adding Mike Houston Street to the municipal street system. Was that supposed to be in here?
I'm sorry, I...
It's right here.
Could we amend that to Councilway?
This actually was just a cover letter, it should not be included in the agreement.
But is it part of the agreement?
No, that, that can be removed from the agreement.
I, because I have Aldermen who want it to be Councilway. So, I just need clarity. This ordinance...
If we could remove that sheet from the, from the agreement?
Move to consent.
Yep.
So, that sheet will come out?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, you guys can make that up.
I mean, no offense, Mayor, but I'd like a street named after me.
Well, maybe I can make that amendment for you.
I'll second it.
Alderman Cameron, did you have something?
Uh, yes, I don't know, I'll just stick to the, stick to the issue here.
You, you wanted named after you.
No, I thought maybe we'd name it after Chairman Simpson, but, but anyways...
I like it, Chairman Simpson Way, I like that. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh, we're, our share of this is 112,000. What is the total cost of this project?
I believe it's 9.5 million.
And this is going to make Dirksen Parkway four lanes from Clear Lake all the way till where it is four lanes now, is that correct?
That's correct. It'll actually make it a five-lane section from Ridge to Clear Lake Avenue.
All right, well, this is certainly a much improved improvement.
The speed limit won't change on this, on there, on this street?
That's my understanding.
And it will really complement the work that's already been done on Clear Lake. It'll make it very nice and leading into the right-hand turn. It'll be very, a lot safer than what it is right now. Excuse me. May I be recognized to speak, please? It will make it much nicer, it will complement what's happening out there now, and it'll be much safer. Thank you. Thank you. Low lefthood, that was good. So, it's on the consent agenda, and there's no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
2013-354 is a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in the amount of $112,000 may be used for traffic, traffic signals, sidewalks, and bike lanes improvements on Dirksen Parkway.
Is there a consent?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
2013-355 is an ordinance approving the final plat of Legacy Point Town Center, Phase Four, for the Office of Public Works.
Is there a motion?
Move to consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
2013-356 is an ordinance approving the plan for large-scale development of the outlets at Springfield in Legacy Point Town Center for the Office of Public Works.
Is there a motion?
Move to consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Could we get listed out the stories?
Thank you.
Every day of the week, someone says, "What's those outlets coming? When are they coming? Who's going to be there?"
Do we know? No idea? Okay. Well, when you do, let us know, because I got some people asking too.
Every day.
I want to know also. Anyway, so, no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
2013-357 is an ordinance approving the reappointment of Dan Long to the Springfield Housing Authority Board of Commissioners.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I request that we hold this in committee, uh, for the reason that I've talked with, uh, Bill Logan, and, um, Dan Long is out of country at the moment, and, uh, we're not sure exactly when he'll return to country, and, uh, I, I think he's a strong appoint, appointee, based on everything I know. I know Dan Long, he worked for the state, and, uh, observed him on the Springfield Housing Authority, and so I've got no problem at this point with Mr. Dan Long, but I think it would be useful for him to be back in town, so that if we have any policy questions we wish to ask him, we can do so. And if, I suppose we could put it on debate, but then maybe it's not a good idea to ask those questions of him at a full council meeting, it'd be better to ask those questions at a committee of the whole type meeting.
Does anybody have any objection to that?
Is this going to create a, a time where we're a boat short, or something?
According to Bill Logan, there's no rush to this point appointment.
I think, Madam Chair.
Yes.
And I think he's on the Housing Authority now, right?
That's correct, this is a reappointment.
So they serve until their, their replacement is appointed, so he would just continue to be on the Housing Authority.
Okay, so we want to leave this in committee?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, is there any unfinished, unfinished business to come before this body? Any new business? Yes, Mr. Treasurer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to let everybody know that the annual treasurer's report was filed with the city clerk's office and the county clerk's office. You should have received an email, but if you want a hard copy, we can make that for you, and it should be on the city's website by the end of the week for public viewing.
Thank you. Any additional new business come before the council? Any citizens who wish to request, uh, to address the committee? Yes, ma'am. Uh, when you approach the podium, can you just state your name and address, please? Uh, you have about five minutes.
My name's Margie Wilson, I live at 18 Alberta Lane in the Jerome area. So, um, from what I found out today, I really don't have a alderman that represents me because of Jerome being its own municipality.
Right.
Um, but it recently came to my attention that, um, there is no ordinance in the books on, in Springfield that requires jewelry department, jewelry stores to keep a log of any stolen jewelry that they may purchase for meltdown. And I recently had an incident with a family member where a, my mother's heirloom ring was sold to Clover and Sons, and there's no recourse that we can take against them because there's no ordinance that makes them keep a log of what they're buying, or keep the jewelry for a certain amount of time, like 30 days, like pawn shops are made to do. They have no ordinance to where they have to even keep, um, any information on who they bought the, the purchase was made from. And I just think it's outrageous that we can make people have to show identification and driver's license and thumbprints for turning in copper, but nobody's being responsible from these jewelry stores to keep a log of who's coming in with stolen jewelry from families and burglaries to buy their drugs, and nobody's being held responsible for it.
Alderman Griffin?
Actually, as you leave tonight, if you could probably give your, your number to the police officer in the back, uh, Cliff Buscher and, well, Robbie Williams at the time, and the mayor's office had actually, and I corresponded, ordinance to actually address that exact situation. They were trying to work out the details with some of the larger buyers within this area. So if you could leave your number with this officer in the back, you'd probably be able to pass that on to, uh...
I, I would really appreciate it, because, you know, these kids and adults, they know where to go. They know where they can sell this stuff, and the response from the jewelry store when we went in there trying to locate my mother's ring was, um, "There's no ordinance, we don't have to keep records, call the police department, there's nothing they can do."
Alderman, that works.
Yeah, just because there's no ordinance, does state law cover it, corporate counsel? I don't know. I mean, I, I'm not sure about that. I mean, don't, don't stop with us, because
I mean, as far as the...
If there's state law out there, we'll investigate and see if there is.
As far as an individual, if I get caught with stolen property, I can be prosecuted. Is that not correct?
That's true.
So I see what, the problem is, they'd already melted it down, so we haven't, you know, even though they have a log in their checkbook that he was in there five times within a month and sold this jewelry, they immediately sent it off and had it melted down. And she had no problem saying, "Send the police in all you want, there's nothing they can do."
Alderman.
Um, Alderman Griffin, I, I didn't hear exactly what you said, but I know, some months ago, you had introduced an ordinance about report, something to do with this. Did that, you know, that, uh, did that cover the situation?
Yes, it did. It's, I got, I actually still have the file right here. Uh, it's half inch thick of stuff we, they, they've actually looked at all the different facets, and there are some, some hurdles that they still had to work through. I know they've been kind of busy on some other things lately, with the administration.
I've, I've talked to at least 20 people that has had the same thing happen to them. The jeweler even informed me that one lady was able to come back in and buy her stuff back because they hadn't melted it down yet.
And the police department was the ones that did bring it forward, that they were frustrated, they had some concerns about being able to address it, and wanted to have something in place that would allow, to give them some steps.
And I talked to police, the Springfield Department today also.
That makes no sense.
It doesn't.
Because if you have stolen property in your possession, why would you have to buy it back, corporate counsel?
So, these jewelers...
You shouldn't have to buy it back.
I think the issue there would be, um, perhaps, maybe the, the mother did not want to press charges against her son, so, and then instead of having the police, if it was me, I would have had him thrown in jail. But, I, I understand that that's an issue with some parents.
Alderman Griffin?
And part of the unique problem that we have here is, is a ring is, "Oh, that's mine." Well, you know, when you have electronics, you have guns, you have stuff with serial numbers, you have, you have bills of sale, you have a paper trail it does, whereas some of this heirloom jewelry really doesn't have any type of identifying marks or paper trails, and this is what's caused some of this frustration, is then...
Because it's over 40 years old.
Right, they're going to come walk in and say, "That was my grandmother's ring." How, how are you going to prove it's not? So how would then the jewelry, the jewelry who had purchased it in good faith have to turn that over then free of charge, et cetera? So those are some of the things that they were trying to work through, and they've been working through, I know they've been, had met with the gentleman from the Gold Center, and some of the bigger buyers that deal on a large amount, to try to get that work out.
We really wouldn't have had a problem buying it back, so that they're not out the money. But they're very well aware of the fact that when this person comes in five times within a month and selling female jewelry, that it's probably stolen.
Thank you. And follow what Alderman Griffin said, talk to...
If you could talk to that officer right there, he would, he'll get your number and pass it along to Cliff Buscher.
Alderman in the back? Please, again, state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Tony Parkhurst, uh, citizen here in Springfield, Illinois. I addressed this city council with the mayor over a year ago on an issue that still exists today. Uh, I have been called accused of a crime that I didn't commit or insinuated by one of your sergeants. I have a problem with the building and zoning board, and I, I hope that this city council would see the wisdom in acting proactively and getting the records from the building and zoning. Because I had a building, requested a building and zoning inspection of a certain business here in town, and after the Freedom of Information Act request, was told in these reports that no other document existed, that they've done the building inspection, they passed. Through some information I got, I again requested it, and, uh, all of a sudden, they found a letter from another building inspector on his private computer outside the building, or wherever they were looking for these records from, stating to this business owner, as our business, the building owner of the business, where our business is at, that, um... Lost my train of thought here for a second. That as soon as he gets everything fixed, all the violations fixed, let him know, and he'll come out and re-inspect. Now, that's the letter that was hidden on a computer. Now, this building was known to have defects before it was rented, and, and has a business in there. I brought it up several times to the, uh, chief of the fire service here. I was basically called a liar there. I'm in possession, and in fact, on the internet, there are documentations, and I've showed Sam Kamen a picture of a fire exit being blocked at this business, for all to see.
Uh, what ward is it in?
Uh, whatever, 411 East Adams Street, whoever's ward that is. As of this morning, when I went there at 6:30, or by there, I was checking my mail, there is a Springfield Police Department car parked across the street in this business. I called the Springfield Police Department, asked if they could go get his name, and noticed if that fire exit is blocked or unblocked, because it was blocked. There is people and businesses opened. Now, they told Chief Firsting, the owners assured him that they never have a fire exit blocked during business hours. Or that I, in one, uh, report, I was harassing the owners. Now, he won't, the chief won't give me the names of the owners that he talked to. I'm just a little curious. We got a, a building and zoning board member, our building and zoning inspector saying,